You should have met with staff.
All right. Good evening, everyone. We on here? All right. So that the last meeting, we had our budget presentation and we went through all of the pages. So we had two items that we noticed from last time that were excluded from here. On page fifty seven in the Public Works Admin, I realized that the engineering services line, we had intended to raise that up to sixty thousand instead of thirty to match what we're doing with planning. So that was one item that we noticed. And then this. Correct. And then on page forty seven, the legal services line, which is thirty two ten, we intended to raise that by seventy two seventeen thousand to one ninety. And it's not a change in the fees. It's just a buffer in case we have increased services. One ninety. Correct. Other than that, I did not have any changes. Surprisingly, we didn't have more things missed. So that was it for changes on here. And then I know that several of you had asked to discuss the mill levy again tonight. So I don't know if anybody has comments or would like to.
Mayor, I'd like to share something if you don't mind. This afternoon, I had an earlier today, I had a conversation with both Eric Stone and then Bob Campbell at Eric's recommendation to just visit with the county about where they are in their consideration of Senate Bill one oh eight. And that ability to affect a mill levy, temporary mill levy reduction to kind of smooth out the spike from the incre- the massive increase in valuations that hit all at once. And so they kind of approached it initially with a maybe three the first year to the second, one the next, and then evaluate that as they go. What they've, where they've landed and what's in their budget is effectively approximately two point five per mil decrease temporarily. And then he shared with me a process thing that I guess I didn't pick up on, and I just want to be sure that the council is aware and then the public that the way that it works is not actually changing the mills as far as our certification to the county commissioners for our mills. It is effectively calculating what that change in revenue would be. And then taking that number and applying it to the taxpayers as a temporary credit to their taxes for the year. That's how that it it works. It's how, that's how it's applied and implemented. So I wanted to just share that with you all because it's something I wasn't aware of. And that's how it actually is done.
So is that different than how you, how we do a temporary mill levy reduction? Or is it the same? I mean, because when we did the, when the previous council did the mandatory or the, the
The permanent?
Permanent one, that's just obvious. I mean, that's just, it goes to that. So, so basically ours is going to be similar. It's just going to be a credit if we do two mills or three mills.
So if we do two, let's say what we've considered last time was two mills.
I'm just trying to make sure I understand.
The revenue change of that.
Right.
Is for twenty twenty four three hundred and twenty nine thousand, four hundred and fifty three dollars. So that amount would be applied
As a credit.
As a cre- temporary credit to their tax bill as a line item on their tax bill.
Right. So, so the actual property tax statement would still say Woodland Park. The levy equals fifteen point seven. Okay, all right.
But effectively.
Effectively, there'll be a credit.
They get a credit. And that's how the bill works. And that's how they were able to bring that forward. And it has to do with Tabor revenue limitations and whether a city or a county or an in taxable entity is debrused, if you will, whether they have Tabor limitations or not. And that the rules apply differently to those entities. So this is how they were able to do this across the state and affect that ability to help our folks over the course year by year.
Right.
To smooth that curve.
Right. So then did they decided to do two and a half?
That's where they're at in their.
For the next three years or?
No, just for, it's one year at a time.
Right.
And then they'll look at it.
They'll assess it.
See what it looked like, see what next year looks like. And then go through the process again of evaluating their financial analysis to see what effect that has both in the current year and in the future.
Right, right. Because we're paying in arrears, so.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you.
But Kelly, we don't have to do it that way. We can do a dollar decrease. We don't have to do a credit back to the taxpayer. And I wonder too, is there any difference between the fact the county is statutory and we're home rule?
Yeah, that was my next, that was.
Now, what do you mean by?
They have a statutory government.
I understand that, but your first statement.
My first statement is we don't have to do it as they discussed doing it at the county level. We can still say a temporary mill levy decrease is a dollar decrease, not a credit back to the taxpayer.
It's.
Property owner.
There have been, and Jeff, you might help me with that question, but there is a risk there that you may have to go back to the voters to re- bring your mill levy back up. If you decrease your mill levy.
And we wouldn't if you did it as a credit?
Yes. And that's how the bill is worded.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
The money comes into the government, goes back.
Yeah.
And in conversations with them as well, it was consistency. You know.
Okay.
That was kind of the thought process on doing the credit.
So I didn't want that to be a surprise when we get around to certi- certifying the mill levy. We can still affect the same thing with a tax credit.
So we certify the mill levy at the fifteen point seven five and then do the tax credit versus what we, we've talked about in the past, which is to do a temporary one year mill levy reduction, and then it goes back to normal. So I, I, I guess I'm with Carol. I'm not quite sure why we have to do the credit versus just doing a one year. Is it because of this bill?
Because of the bill.
Okay.
Well, that's. And how it's provided and Tabor.
We would not be able to bring it back up again to the previous level.
Because of the bill.
No, because of Tabor.
Because of Tabor, yeah.
Okay, all right.
Okay. Because I. It's, it, there's a risk.
Now, that's.
By doing that.
Okay, all right.
And, and so the, the proper way according to the bill is to do a tax credit. And it in the, in, at the end of the day, it's the same thing. It's just how it's.
Which is how it's done. Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And then that tax credit shows up on their, it, it just shows that next year they'll have two point five percent less from the, from the county X percent from the city. And their bill will be that much less.
Correct.
That's all they pay.
And there is a line item, so it is identified.
Right.
And in the, on their tax bill as a credit. And then it just reduces their bottom line that they write a check for.
Yeah, that's what I'd expect in this.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. And from the city perspective on page twenty six, if you look at the first line, which is three, one, 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 it basically would be, the credit would be whatever we put in the budget line here for this in the two thousand twenty four amount. It would be that amount minus whatever the full amount would be. What, whether Senate Bill twenty three, three or three passes or not. So we wouldn't know that full credit amount until we actually know the results of that election. It's on, on page twenty six. It's the very, the very top line.
Something else to keep in mind that we haven't talked about yet is this also will be, will affect the DDA revenue. Because that's a tax, that's a property tax revenue funded fund as well. Whatever we do, we'll do the same thing in the DDA.
So I want to take it from a different approach. It's great to know what the county's doing. We need to look at our own city budget and our own revenues and the own way we develop what we do in the city. So no, 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 that's, that's fine. That's good. What I want to focus now on is on our budget, our revenues and kind of where we are as we look at this budget. On page six, the twenty twenty four recommended budget for all funds is thirty five million, one hundred and forty one thousand, two hundred and twelve, a three point six, that's a million dollar increase, which is a fifteen point five percent over the two thousand twenty three adopted budget. The city's general fund will increase one point one nine one two hundred million, eight point three percent compared to year over year from last year or this year. So based on those increased revenues, based on the, you know, our increase in inflation and other considerations that Aaron has laid out throughout the budget. I want to turn to page eleven now and go to the components of the twenty twenty four projected general fund balance. The unrestricted balance is, well firstly, where's the first line? Firstly, on the fu- the fund balance is unrestricted reserves rises to fifty percent in twenty twenty three. So we're saying that, that as of now, our unrestricted balance is fifty percent of our budget. That's very high. So then if we look at where it, by the end of the year and the, and the budget projections that, that Aaron has done with each of the departments, putting in all the necessary reasonable escalators, development, capital and investment. What's that? Oh, okay. You want to answer or you can answer yourself? So that leaves us i- in this budget, an unre- unassigned fund balance of twenty one point nine percent. That's high. And last time we had, last year when we had a high unrestricted fund balance, we chose to pay off the Memorial Park. And we did that this year. And that's a great, that's a great step forward for the city. Now we can focus on improvements, engineering, other things as now it's our owned asset. But I would suggest that as we look at what sort of mill levy reduction that we do, we should look at it from the standpoint of we are the custodians of the community's funds and we should, we should be responsible in how we do that. So this year, it's really clear to me that a thirty percent increase in property taxes is a place to address. The county has done it through legislation. But from our standpoint of what we can do, in my opinion, we have an unrestricted fund balance of two points, two million, seven hundred and thirty nine thousand, three hundred and forty seven. If we drop that to what was suggested and, and I do not recall it became policy, Aaron, maybe you can clarify that. I don't know where it became policy. I know we had, the council before us had some really big issues because the pool was built and there was no reserves left, et cetera. And I thought the, what the standard reserve was about ten percent. And then how do we get to seventeen percent?
So we went back and researched and in the strategic plan that was put out in two thousand nineteen, the goal was to get the city from twenty to twenty five percent unrestricted fund balance. And that was also put into the comprehensive plan that was just put out last year as well. So that's where that number comes from. It's seventeen to twenty five percent, but then the strategic plan itself laid out twenty to twenty five percent. So I think we're right in line with that as where we currently are.
Okay.
And that's, it's, it's not an ordinance, but it was adopted by the council six to zero when they put that out.
Okay.
I, I had to go back in with myself because I didn't know for sure, but that's, that's where it was.
Well, even further back in history to the period of time when we were trying to finance the pool, the aquatic center, the council wanted to keep that reserve at ten percent. It never fell to zero. It did fall below ten percent, but it never fell to zero. But the seventeen percent is a roundup of two months of operating expenses for two, it's like sixteen point whatever. So that's where seventeen percent comes from. Twenty one point nine is a pretty healthy approach. And, and I'd be willing to discuss that, but at, at the same time, something that I, when I had my one on one with Aaron and Suzanne this week, week is what are we? What, what's the black swan out there? What do we, what do we not know is going to happen? If we've got the luxury of having a reserve at that level, maybe we should hold on to it for a year. Maybe some part of it comes away from a, a mill levy reduction by credit. Not a permanent mill levy reduction. But who's to say that the purchase of a conservation easement isn't going to eat that up? Who's to say that we may have expenses for a code enforcement officer that is not included in this budget? I'm not uncomfortable right now approving a budget that's got twenty one point nine percent, knowing that we can, we can at any point during the budget year, decrease that.
Well, that's a great consideration. In, in the process here, we also have, so, so let, let's just look at the numbers of what that looks like. So if we have a unrestricted fund balance of seventeen percent, that would change the number two point seven mil to two point one two six and, and change million dollars. That's a difference of six hundred and twelve, nine hundred and fourteen dollars, which from my calculations would be about a three point five mil, which could go back to the citizens.
Three point five?
Three point five mil. And the reason I say this, yes, and I've got another one here, another calculation which I'll get to. And that's based on Aaron's thumbnail, a calculation of about a hundred and seventy three thousand per mil.
So just, just to clarify, you're saying an additional three point five mil, correct?
Correct.
Correct. So it'd be five point five total. According to my calculations, it would be a five point five mil reduction to get down to seventeen percent. So that's, that would be three point five additional.
Oh, 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 I didn't realize it was, it was that much.
It's pretty significant.
Okay.
It'd actually be, it would actually reduce our revenue from the previous year.
Well, when you get, when you do, so it's not one hundred and seventy three thousand roughly per mil?
It is.
Oh, it is. And so it's five point five. Oh.
Yeah.
Yes. All right. So five point five mil. So, so that's, that's one figure, one, one consideration point. Okay. The second one is if you go, I don't know where I put mine, you go to what we got from the county back when we had the county discussion. And you look at what the Woodland Park projected, let's see, let's start with property revenues for twenty twenty three, estimated property revenues for twenty twenty four. I'll just ignore that, the preparation HH proposal, because that's not voted in yet. And I don't know that we need to plan that in our numbers. But so you have two, two point oh six oh revenue for two, twenty twenty three and proposed revenues for twenty twenty four is two point seven three three. So that number is six hundred and seventy two thousand, eight hundred and forty five dollars. So when I looked at that number and I looked at what we have in our difference between a twenty one point nine percent unrestricted fund balance and a, and what is been agreed to as a seventeen percent is, is a good place to be. That gives me, if you take, and I must have those numbers really messed up too here, because I had six hundred and seventy two, eight forty five as being three point nine mils. So that obviously is five point something.
Yeah.
How did I get it so far wrong? Hundred and seventy three per. And I got three point eight eight nine two seven eight, so three point nine mils. So when I looked at the two, and of course now my calculation is in error, but I'll, I will con- I will conclude with where I think we should be with a mill, a temporary mill level, a levy reduction is somewhere between the three point, what I said was a three point nine and a three point five. So I thought we could reasonably give back to our citizens this year a three point seven five mil reduction. It's a one year. But it puts the money where it needs to be right now. We are very healthy as far as a city budget. Our citizens are facing, they don't have it today, but when they get their bill next year, they're going to have an increase in their property taxes. And I, from my point of view, it's important that we signal to the citizens that we're all going into this next season together. We have had benefits, good benefits in our revenues and the way we manage our city. And I think it's important for us to give back to the citizens at this point. And it's temporary. It's a good, because we, it's not in my, in my eyes anyway. It's not a, a good time to be, we can't anyway, pay down the pool because till twenty twenty five. We're having a change of council. So we have no guarantee that those funds, if we earmark them, they would be set aside for that purpose into the future. And I think giving it back to the citizens now is the highest and best responsibility of the use of our funds. Any?
Mayor, I'd like to agree with those. I would like to also ask, we, our budgets increased by eight percent, you said, from last year?
The expenditure budget.
Right. And so our citizens, for the most part, the ones who are restricted for monthly payments for their retirement are typically at three point two percent for this coming year for cola. So how do we justify having a reserve far above the seventeen percent? Knowing that we have lots of citizens out there right now concerned and actually hurting at this point, even just trying to go day by day here. So I'd like to know why everybody thinks that a three point five mil reduction on the temporary basis is not good.
Well, I just suggested it. I don't know that anybody thinks anything.
So how much is three point five mils per household?
Additional or total?
How much is, yeah, I mean, total. How much is it per household? That's what I calculated was a hundred and twenty ish for the year.
Hundred and twenty ish.
Okay.
Year, so ten dollars.
Yeah.
So they're getting a thousand dollar increase roughly with their thirty percent, right? The, the average, no, the actual bill for an average homeowner will be about a thousand dollars more. So we would represent giving them a ten point twelve percent reduction.
Correct. And the city only makes up nineteen percent of the total.
Correct, correct. So, yes. No, I have no idea what other jurisdictions are going to do in terms of their mill levy. But I think signaling from the city that out of their thousand dollar increase, the city's giving back twelve percent of that this year is, is, one, that's sounds, it generally sounds good. It is fair. And two, why are we holding on to the funds otherwise? If we give it back to their hands now, there could, things could change in twenty four, in, in twelve months and it's temporary, doesn't affect as Pro Tim case was saying last week about the permanent reduction in the rate. But it meets their needs now. And I think it's, that's my thoughts on it.
Right, Danny. Do we have a consensus on what we'd like to do with the mill levy?
I would, I would agree with Carol. I, I would like to, without a complete analysis by staff, I'm not prepared to entertain. We have a lot of obligations. We've had two fires that significantly impacted our revenue collections. And we were really grateful to have some reserves to lean on during those two fires. Hamin was tough because we were lean, we were very, it was tough to make payroll and cash flow things because we were so low on reserves that it was a feat, a trick to cash flow, even payroll, much less accounts payable for KIP and water and wastewater. And we're, we're we have obligations for the debt that we have on our books. There's things in there in the official statement that are called coverages, coverage ratios, and we have to maintain those coverages or we violate the terms of our debt. And that hasn't been considered. There's just a lot of things. We had a pandemic. Although the sales tax did quite well during the pandemic, because nobody could do anything but buy groceries and cook at home. Yeah. And I just, I, I just, I'm very adamant that without proper analysis, I'm not willing to consider it. I am very comfortable with the twenty one point nine percent fund balance. I've for twenty five years looked forward to that. And just know that it makes, it makes that security for the responsibility we have to our citizens. It's there. When we have unplanned for disasters and things that we don't plan, pandemics and all of that. So the, the range that was set by our strategic plan and carried forward to other documents that we use for planning purposes was a goal of twenty to twenty five percent. I think we're sitting right where we need to be. However, I am in support of the two percent mill levy reduction this year. And then next year, we can see how, how that react, how that acted and what that looked like. And maybe we can even do more next year. I think it, in conjunction with the other taxing districts, I think we'll be able to make a, a nice impact for citizens to try and soften that curve instead of it being like it is now, to bring it to where we can level it off over a few years as a collaborative group of taxer, taxing entities.
Well, if I may.
Yes.
Erin, I'm assuming this is your document.
Correct.
Erin has given us two options and none of them are five point five, Robert, but one is two percent mill levy decrease and the, or three, two mil up or two mils. And then the second one is three mils. And with the two mil temporary reduction, our reserve is at twenty one point four four. With the three mil reduction, it's at twenty point zero nine. I would not be uncomfortable with the three mil, a temporary three mil reduction. But five point five to me sounds like. Yeah, you had bad.
Three, yeah, three point seven five.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm a public school product too, my math.
What do you mean? I, I learned on an abacus.
I may have too.
Kidding.
I, I am not uncomfortable with a three mil decrease for the coming year. Because it does keep us at twenty point zero nine. And I mean, it's, we don't know what the future holds. This may be the year that we are going to have to hire a, a, a second code enforcement officer. Or we may have to hire additional police officers if we ever come to an agreement with the school district about SROs. So I want, I would prefer to keep it at twenty point zero nine for the coming year with a three point or a three mil levy decrease.
The last point I wanted to make, Rusty, I'm sorry, Carol, I didn't mean to.
I'm through.
We, there's a very, there is a chance because it's a yes, no vote. That Prop HH may pass. Prop HH will impose upon us half of what we're looking at here already. And so we need to be mindful of that. God forbid it happens, but it could. And so that will be on top of what we're doing.
And, and we do have a bit of time to digest what happens after the election next week.
We do. So, oh, Rusty, Rusty, you can go.
I, I have a question, Aaron. When you gave your presentation at the very beginning of it, last council meeting, the document that you gave us, you started off by saying that it already had the two mil reduction built into those numbers.
Correct.
Okay, then which is correct? The unrestricted fund balance being twenty one point four four or twenty one point nine zero? Or twenty one point nine zero at the two mil reduction?
I should have cleared that up right at the beginning. The twenty one point four four is after the thirty thousand additional engineering services. And the seventeen thousand for the legal services. So that, that's how we, that we're at twenty one point four four right now.
Okay, so we're, so the twenty point zero nine is after the thirty thousand and the other.
Okay, correct. Yeah, tw- twenty point oh nine is what I project.
Yeah, I.
Will you just clarify that? So you're saying you've already calculated in this budget, in the figures, two mil reduction?
Yes, sir. And, and that's why when you're calculating, you're coming up with five point, three point five.
Yeah.
The real number is five point five.
Oh, so now I see.
It's just you had, you didn't account for the.
Then even more strongly, I think we should have at least three point seven five mil, absolutely. I, I missed that. I missed that we had two percent, a, a two mil reduction already built into this current budget. So no, I'm absolutely, uh, yeah, five point five is a little excessive, but I'm fine with three point seven five, at least, at least. Well, because we are in a, we're, we're in such a strong position. And, and I just want to take up before, before we go on. Families have debts in their, on their books as well. Families went through the pandemic. They went through the same issues we went through. Disasters faced us all. And I, my question to you, how do you justify to our elderly citizens on a fixed income? That you're fine to be okay, but you're not fine that they're having to pay an extra thousand dollars a year on, in their budget?
Elderly, I am too, individual on a fixed income, and I don't have a problem with a three mil decrease.
Well, yours is three, this is two, and I'm suggesting three points. I was actually suggesting five point five. Looking at these numbers, I was looking at, we could quite reasonably decrease this by five point five mils. That's, that's not necessary, so.
A lot of seniors have the homestead exemption, so this doesn't even impact them. Not everyone.
That is a consideration for, for. That's a consideration, yeah.
Okay, so.
I, I would like to see it work, the whole budget worked up with the three. I mean, in a staff re, re-review of your own budget, supporting a three, three mil reduction. But uh, I, I'm more conservative than you are. I, I want to keep it between that twenty and twenty five that we originally set as our strategic goal. There are reasons for having um a buffer there. The twenty point zero nine takes us down to the absolute minimum. That we set as our goal, which I'm okay with, but going below it, I'm not.
Well, I would just say that, Rusty, that, um, I give, I'm, I'm good with this, with this um analysis.
Yeah, he's been trying to speak for a while.
Captain, I just have a small little thing to say, I'm sorry. Thank you. Um, this, Rusty, for me. Just rolls this up into this. And it's just the revenue, this one line item that's going to change. Okay, in the, in the line items of the budget.
I can read your balance sheet so you can see the fund balance. If that's what you're looking for, because.
Okay, so you've, you've looked at it then with that.
That's where the twenty point of nine.
Yeah, and I could, I could support three mil and Catherine, I apologize.
I can't. All right, so I agree with Carol and I agree with Kelly. Um, I have a real problem going less than twenty percent. We don't know what the economy is doing. I mean, stock market tanked. Now it's back up, we're probably pushing into recession. We may or may not get the sales tax revenue that we have had, who knows? If we're going to tack on an ambulance tax, who knows what that's, if people are going to stop shopping or less people are going to shop here because we're going to have one of the highest. Sales taxes in the county or in the city, in the state, sorry, in the state. So I, I could entertain three. I would be much more comfortable at two or two and a half, but that's my two cents.
Thank you. I was, Erin, I was just going to ask, does that include, um. Does your projected balance include if we had both financial director and city manager and all?
Oh, yes, yes. That's every position, correct?
Okay.
Yeah, that would be scary.
So, I remember when we had like six hundred thousand dollars in the general fund. I'm not happy with that and I'm not comfortable with that, so I'm not going to ever go that way.
It was a hundred. Fourteen thousand dollars.
Yeah, well.
And we quickly recovered. It was, it was one of the, Carolyn and I, Carolyn and I had many battles when I was still a citizen. And I was, I was that person that came to the dais and, and I finally said, instead of being that person. I should step up and use my skill set to try and help solve the problem. And that's why I ran. And we've done a remark, we, not me, we as a council, and it's been different faces in the six years. But we have done a remarkable job, and it even started before I ran, to recover. And it was quite a battle. Um, there, we lost a lot of positions in finance. We lost three positions that still have not come back. And so it's, it's tough. And to live through that, and it's tough on the people.
Um, well, I can remember my street did get plowed. Yeah. Until I got eight inches or more.
I know, so.
Anyway, it was, it was not fun. No, I have a four wheel drive because I go to the lake. Okay, so, and then I'm done, one more. Um, sorry, you guys like, wouldn't let me tell you. Um, the other thing is, like Rusty said, the strategic plan is twenty to twenty five percent. That's the citizens. The citizens document is the comp plan. Um, and I, I just think we're being, we're being disrespectful to the citizens if we go below that.
Well, Catherine, for what it's worth, I agree with you, so. But, but that's because I think that the budgeting with the city is critical and it's important in the sense of, we don't know what's coming. Or what to expect emergency wise, but the other thing is, is it does make us successful in paying off debt and being able to accomplish things. That ultimately, the following council for next year. And the next four years that they serve can look at doing a meaningful reduction rather than a pittance of a reduction, so. Especially if we're able to pay debts off. Uh, anyhow, so is there a consensus for the three percent?
Let's ask how many votes, how many people would support up to three? I would support up to, but if there's only three people that say yes, then let's go to the point five and see what happens.
Why don't we go to five point five and then settle at three point seven five? I'd be good with that.
Just real quick, let me, let me just add this. Every year, this mill levy issue comes up, and every year someone asks for some irreverent. Reduction. And the thing that gets under my skin is, you ask for it without ever asking staff to bring the number. The impact of those numbers. There's no study.
Right.
Erin at least thought ahead and did this with the two and the three percent. But asking for five percent and laughing about it is rather obnoxious and annoying because staff. How can we make a decision when we are lacking that information? We don't have the actual impact of that on the city and the services. So the next time you want to bring that much, it's great. But do it with the staff having a study to present to council so we understand the impact that that does. Because there's no way I'm going to have a consensus or vote on something that I don't know the answer to.
Well, we're here to be the eyes and ears for the citizens. I have already asked Erin to prepare those numbers with the type of a mill reduction levy that I suggest. Mill levy that I suggested. Um, I'm not going to put him on the spot of where he is at because he's obviously talked to each of you on a one on ones and has, and has presented what he's presented uh to us here tonight. I look through this budget with the eyes of a citizen. I am not a government employee. I am a constitutionalist. I am for less government, but I am also very respectful that we have a very good and necessary use of government. Our staff does a very, very good job, and I'm surprised at how well Aaron's stepping into the position as city manager. And doing the finances like you are. Having said that, I have a responsibility as citizens to look at every single number in this. And to look at it and say, okay, either justify it to me, help me understand how this is good for us. And if I could actually, if it is in good conscience, can say yes to it. I don't have to say yes to every number in this.
Right.
Although I'm very pleased with how he's put it together. And as I look at this, as a businessman, as a business owner, and I look at where our numbers are. He can very easily carve out three point seven mils, very easily. And so from that standpoint, uh, I, I stand for the responsibility I have. I'm not here to represent, as much as I like our staff. I'm not here to represent our staff. I'm here to represent the, the citizens who voted me into this office. And in doing that, I've got to look at this budget and say with a critical eye, okay, get my conservative pen, if you like, out and look at this and say. Okay, you've really, from what I've heard from, from my colleagues here this, this evening, you are very much into. Give staff everything they need to grow the city as, 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 as they see fit. I'm here as a check and balance on that. I'm not saying that I don't, I, no, I. Each of these departments have put together good numbers in here, and we can still trim them and give citizens back. Uh, funds at this time in our, i- this time in this juncture in our budget and in their budget. And I don't think it's unreasonable, and I don't think it's, you know, it's, the sky isn't falling. It may be falling for some people, but the sky isn't falling. And we have to look at it responsibly. I look at it with a conservative eye to constitutional principles. I want less government, but I want necessary government.
So, Robert, I'm going to tell you, I've lived here twenty two years.
Good.
And this budget is fine. You go below seventeen percent, I've, I've seen our town look like crap. I've not had my streets plowed. There's water issues, I'm not going, I'm. O S factor, Frank.
Yeah, I know that.
What do you call it? That, that reserve fund is used for emergencies, it's not used to blow your streets.
No, it's not. No, it's not. So I'm, I'm just going to say, I'll go as high as two and a half percent.
Catherine, I'll support that. Well, what, what we have in front of us now, Robert has asked the staff to go beyond this assessment. Of two mil decrease and a three mil de- decrease, and you're asking for a three point seven five analysis. Is there consensus for the staff to do that? I'm asking that now.
No, no, no.
No, okay, we have two numbers in front of us or two, two sets of, of uh statistics.
Right.
A two percent or a two mil uh decrease or a three mil decrease. What is our consensus as a council? Three or two?
Well, you're, you're trying to bring it to a conclusion before we've examined it. You know, I've got.
No, Robert, that we, that is the examination of it because that was the consensus. You're bringing something new. And each year you bring something that has never been examined prior to us looking at it.
Mayor, help me understand. Last week, Erin presented the budget to us, correct?
Yeah.
This week, we're to discuss it, right?
Right.
So then why am I out of line to say I'm doing something that's outside of what we are here to do tonight?
I'm not saying you're out of line. I'm saying for future reference, it would be nice if we had, whatever it is you think you want. There has to be a consensus for that ahead of time, and it would be nice to have it presented. Because the numbers and the lot, like, just like now we have two and three percent. That, because last time we brought it up and there was a consensus to look at that. So I'm saying, think ahead next time. Because no, I don't think any one of us is going to consider something where we don't have numbers in front of us. Because if you want to talk about being a businessman, that's what businessmen do. We know ahead of time and have the numbers now.
And you have them. We have been, tonight, isn't tonight about the discussion of the budget? Help me out. Isn't tonight about the discussion of this budget?
The mill levy. I'm talking solely about when you bring up information about the mill levy. But that's your topic. And you don't bring the numbers ahead of time. You don't bring the impact to us ahead of time. This shows us the impact of these two numbers, which makes the majority or all council comfortable considering. But we aren't going to consider a hypothetical. You're not going to get a consensus on a hypothetical number. So I'm saying, next time, be prepared. That's all I'm saying.
This is not about consensus yet. I mean, maybe.
It is. It's about consensus right now, and I'm going to call it. Let's do it.
A minute, this is a work session. And in a work session.
Six nineteen and all we're doing, all you and I are doing is repeating ourselves. That's all we're doing.
Robert, I did not discount your, your request for an analysis of a three point seven five mil of a decrease. I asked for consensus as a council member, and no one wants to go down that road. We have two numbers in front of us that can be used to carry this budget process through to December. If we're simply saying tonight, you know what, Erin, you did a good job of showing us the impact on this budget. We're not through with this budget. This, but this is a public.
That's what I'm trying to say. We're not.
So right now, we've got two numbers that you asked the staff to put, uh, put together at the last council meeting, and they did.
I didn't. I asked Erin in my one on one meeting.
Yeah, I asked Erin too, or something.
So, so, and I did, and I don't.
However, this came to be, all I'm saying is, it's what is in front of us tonight. And this can inform the rest of the budget discussion until December when we vote on it, which is mandated by law, by the way. And then if there's more discussion between now and December, fine. But right now, Erin and the staff is saying. I'm presenting to you two numbers that address your concern about a mill levy decrease. Kelly gave us a great um example of how the county uh deals with mill levy decreases. And it makes sense to me that this is a credit back to property owners, by the way. This is not all taxpayers.
Right, right.
Uh, then let's, let's look at this, and all of us have talked about what we're comfortable with in a reserve. I think twenty percent is, is adequate. That's my personal comfort level. But our strategic plan calls for twenty to twenty five percent, dropping down to the seventeen percent. There's a reason that, that citizens validated our comprehensive plan. They wanted a bigger cushion. And it's not just for emergencies. It's not just taking care of folks if there's another fire in town. It covers a number of unforeseen expenses that we can't even guess at. That's, and we've got that luxury right now. I don't want to pander to voters with a, with a penny, any. Mill decrease.
Penny, Annie, if they're getting a thousand dollar increase a, a year in their budget and they're having to fork out another. How is it, what makes us think that we have, we have, uh, we're. Isolated from the experiences they're having. They're having a thirty percent increase in their property tax. What did we have?
So, so am I.
But look at our, but look at our revenues.
We own our properties. Discussion to end, I want to give our, our finance manager and interim city manager. The opportunity to take these numbers and go forward with our next iteration of the budget discussion. So is there a consensus then for the two percent? Not seeing a consensus for two. Is there a consensus for the three percent?
I would support three. I would support two point five.
I would support two point five and, or three.
I do two five or three. All right, all right.
Hillary, what did you?
I said I'd do two, five or three.
Carol?
I'd support three point seven five.
I'll do three and a half, because I did the math, and three and a half keeps us at twenty percent. Which is twice as much as what the law says we have to have. And I appreciate everybody's concern with all the emergencies. But we pay very good insurance. There's an actual law for constitution that says we have to carry ten percent.
I'd love to see it. There's a, there's a taper requirement.
Yes.
There's a taper, there's a taper requirement which we do have in the budget.
Yes, and it's not the unrestricted.
Correct.
It's reserved for emergencies.
So Erin, I hear a consensus for two, two and a half.
Two and a half, okay.
Here, what did you say?
Two and a half is fine.
So I think you do have.
Now, the question is, is that a temporary mill reduction or is it a credit?
It's a credit. It's a credit.
Okay.
Right? I hear consensus for credit.
Okay, thank you.
Erin, is there anything else?
That was all I had for you tonight. Thank you.
So can, are we going to get another copy of the?
I will send the updated pages for the fund balance reserve. Yes.
And then we still need to go, I think you have some line by lines like we've done in the past.
I would suggest taking those up with staff, and then we could have that discussion on the first reading of the ordinance.
Yeah, but, Robert, I actually thought last week, everybody was comfortable with all the line entries. And the only topic left was the mill. If you don't feel like you've had, because you and I were the ones that went kind of. Line by line in past years, the, the past three.
That, that's what I was accustomed to, yeah.
Yeah, I, I went through it this year, and I've already told Erin, I was actually surprised that I think he was reading the council so well. I did not have an objection to any single line this year. I did not have an objection to any single line this year. I liked the way he had taken that fifty percent. And brought it down to the twenty one point nine by having some expenditures, because you see our, our expenditures are greater than the, the revenues. I like the way he was investing that money, so I would be willing to, to listen to some of the things. I may have missed something.
We're out of time.
Well, I know, not, not for today, but uh, I hope we would continue to dialogue.
Does council feel like they still need another work session for the budget? Is there a consensus for that, or? Like, do you have a lot of things that can you meet with Erin and?
It's not about me meeting with Erin. I'm here to pr- to look at his budget. He's done a fabulous job of it. I've got no. Uh, no problems with that, but, but the citizens need to hear through me. What I'm looking at, and I'm not just cookie, cookie cutter stamping approval on something without examination. And it's healthy to have examination. It's healthy to have departments uh speak to us and address what the issues are. What the planned expend, uh, increased expenditure capital expenses are. And so to railroad it, as I'm seeing it here, it's, to me, it's just, if that's what you're gonna do, I'm, I'm not the majority vote in that. So I, I just express my, my dissatisfaction with your willingness to just explore it in a mature way to say. Oh, there's this item, this item, this item, and you're just.
Ho- hold on.
Hold on.
I haven't said anything about the budget, and who can say what, or how long, or when, or anything.
Really?
I haven't railroaded anyone. We've had these work sessions that have been set by the city and by council. I haven't said we can't have any, and no one can say anything. No one up here has been railroaded by anyone. You have a lot you wanna talk about, but not all of council does. So that's on you.
I see that, I get.
That's on you.
If Robert wants another work session, do it, so be it.
I, I'd like to have a one more one hour work session.
And that's why I just asked if people wanted another work session.
I will do it.
Then you started to say we're railroading you, and I don't appreciate that. I have never been, I have never been rude to you. And I have never cut any of you off until right now.
I don't take it personally.
Well, your words are personal towards everyone.
The council by saying those things, because you do not have evidence that that is what has happened.
So anyways, I'm hearing a consensus for another work session.
Oh, go for it. Let, let it be the Robert show. I don't care. If, if he wants to go through it line by line, by golly, that's what we'll do.
I would like to hear the line by lines. So you have at least one person asking for a work session.
I did too. Everybody agreed.
I see a.
The whole council just agreed.
I love sandwiches from City Market. Let's go.
We have a consensus.
So, so staff will schedule that.
Yeah, so we, we have to think about when that might be, because your next council meeting, we have an hour and a half executive session. Scheduled for the review of the city manager applicants, and that's from five to the start of the next council meeting. So I don't know if you want the work session after that one, but I know Erin needs to, because he has to bring you the ordinance.
Right.
So let's come up with a date.
Can you do a doodle poll or a?
I can.
That would be good.
I mean, unless council wants to have it after the next council meeting.
We cannot have it after, because the first reading is next meeting.
Oh, that's right.
We have to have it either tonight after this meeting, or we need to have it some other time before the next meeting.
And we can't have it tonight because it's not noticed.
Okay, then.
Right, it's a work session.
Can we flip the executive session and the work session?
No, because it's the recruiters are. Yeah, um, we could do it tonight, if we wanted to.
Okay, well, I think we, we need to do it as soon as possible, so I could start working.
Or we can schedule a meeting next week.
Either one is fine with me.
Yeah, next week.
Yeah, I can't stay tonight. The next week follow, or the next council meeting following council.
No, we can't.
We have to read the first.
Erin has to bring you the initial posting that evening, so we have to do it next. We have to have an additional meeting next week.
And can I, can I have some direction on what we were looking to see in this next meeting, so?
Ask Robert.
Ask Robert.
We'll get where the app.
Okay. And the rest of council is okay with me preparing whatever is asked for this next meeting? Okay, that's all right.
I would not be able to make the eight.
And I can't make the seventh.
I will make something work.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I'm a retired senior on a fixed income, so any night is fine with me.
She likes to spend more money than she has to.
And we can, we can't have it on the ninth, because that's a planning commission night. And so I, you guys, do you want, I mean, do you wanna do Friday night to ten?
I'll be out of town.
Okay.
Can we do Wednesday?
He said he can't be here.
I have the surgery.
Oh, you, oh, you, Wednesday, sorry. Um, what about Monday?
The sixth.
It's fine.
Monday, what day?
The sixth.
Monday the sixth.
Yeah.
That's my schedule. Monday the sixth.
I'm clear, okay, Monday the sixth.
Nothing on your calendar.
Okay, because you're off on the sixth. It's his day off, his mom is in town.
All right, I can, I, I can probably make Tuesday work if that, it's just.
Election night.
It's election night, and my daughter's stuff is that day, so that's a little. But I can make that work if that's the only day we can.
Do you have a consensus for the seventh? It's election night.
No, it's just too much else going on.
You know.
What the hell else is going on? You guys are in the election. You can monitor the election from your computer. You guys aren't.
The purpose of a work session is for the public to be able to attend, and if the public is gonna be all their attention on the election, it's probably not a good concept.
So what night?
Monday.
Why don't we do?
Of the tenth.
What about the ninth?
I mean, we could have it the ninth, we just can, would have it elsewhere. We wouldn't be able to have this room. We could have it.
Oh, that's right, the ninth.
Can we do it before planning?
We can, if, if your schedule permits.
Yeah.
I know some of you work.
You can do it at the youth bath center, the.
We can't televise it from there live. Would council consider a four thirty?
Yeah, I can make nine, I can make that.
I will be late, but I don't care.
A five o'clock on the ninth would give you an hour before planning commission would have.
Hillary can join us.
Yeah.
Marley has surgery that day.
So, so four thirty, I think.
So is that, do I hear consensus for four thirty on the ninth? That's next Thursday, okay. Thursday, eleven, nine, four thirty, work session. Okay, we'll get that posted and publicized.
I guess you're gonna be serving lunch.
At four thirty, you don't get anything to eat.
Really?
Yep, it should be done before dinner. What time does planning commission start? Six thirty or six?
Six thirty, yeah.
Okay.
That would give you two hours.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, good. I feel better about that for you, Erin. Don't go too much. Hey, okay, council, you may log in before you leave.
And we're not doing a break, we're just rolling into meeting.